I would call to order the Village of Westmont Planning and Zoning Commission, our regular meeting here on Wednesday, August 9th, 2023. We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Lavoy.
Here.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Mr. Scales.
Here.
Mr. Berry.
Here.
Mr. Van Buren is here, and Chairman Carmichael.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Excellent. Please stand, rise, and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And don't sit down. Anyone who is going to give testimony tonight needs to be sworn in, so please raise your right hand and swear that any and all testimony you give will be the complete truth, so help you God.
I'm here.
Thank you.
Commissioner Peterson is here. I'm sorry I neglected to call her name on the roll.
I can confirm she's here. Second.
Okay, reminder to please silence your cell phones, any other electronic devices, and please confirm that anyone who has given testimony has either already signed in out in the hallway or at the podium, or anyone who does give testimony must sign in with the name and contact information. First item is approval of minutes of the July 12th, 2023 regular meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
Motion, Scales.
Second.
Thomas. Motion, Scales, second. Thomas. Discussion. Questions? Roll call, please.
Mr. Thomas.
Here.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren. Both yes. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. At this point, there's a kind of a unique thing. This is an open forum. If there's anyone here who would like to address this commission on any issue that is not on our agenda tonight, please step forward to the podium. Seeing no one, we'll proceed with the review of our hearing procedures. First, the applicant petitioner will be introduced and then present his or her petition, followed by staff comments, and then the public, anyone from the public who wants to weigh in with questions or comments. It's their turn, and of course, petitioner can respond to those comments. We have our village attorney here to keep us on the straight and narrow and give us guidance through the evening. And the final, the commissioners' comments and questions, and finally, a vote. We note that all of our votes do include the findings of fact, if they're included. So, under new business, we have PCC 0212023, a request by ADT Limited Liability Commission, the petitioner, and Quail Ridge Executive Illinois Realty, the owner, regarding the property at 1111 Pasquenelli Drive, Suite 100 in Westmont for the following: A special use permit request to operate a business offices with accessory material distribution and warehousing in the Office Research District. Sir, good evening.
Good evening. Mr. Chairman, my name is Jerry Reardon. I work for Jones Langley Sal, JLL. I'm here representing ADT, who is my client for the project, for their intended or their hopeful move to the Pasquenelli location. My role for working on behalf of ADT is as their project manager, coordinating design and construction for this project. I'm here representing them. Their headquarters are based in Miami, Florida, and their office that they're currently located is in Oak Brook and intending to move to the Westmont location. We have a few slides. My background from a project management standpoint is a little bit of architecture and a little bit of construction management and doing the business for about 38 years, so I have a little bit of experience on the interior work or development work. Any questions to begin, or just want me to flip through the first few slides that are...
Continue.
Let's make sure, Dennis. Dennis, can you put on the TV the slides?
Thank you. I can.
Page down, arrow down. This is our represented floor plan. You can see the lower two-thirds of the space is typical open office plan and enclosed offices for their staff and some of their technicians. The area in question is the area up in the green or turquoise color, upper right-hand corner. That space is referred to as their storage facility, or it's written in the staff report tonight as a warehouse facility. ADT runs a residential security business. They're not in the commercial business, they're in the residential security business. So for alarm devices, those sorts of things. What's stored in this storage room are parts for their technicians to pick up and load up their vans for the day and go off and do their jobs for the day. They may not come back and park, so it's not as though there are 53-foot over-the-road tractor trailers coming in on a daily basis. These are small box trucks that will be loading the storage room when inventory is low, and then their technicians load up their service vans for the day and then go off, pardon me, go off on their assignments for the day. They may not come back at the end of the day because they may keep their van with them overnight and then go on to the next. That represents the floor plan. This is the site plan for the facility on Pasquenelli. The blue spaces in the upper-left corner of the site plan are the designated overnight parking spaces that the technician vans will be using if they need to park overnight. It's not guaranteed that 15 vans will be parked every night, but that's the restricted number of spaces that will be used potentially for overnight parking. And then I think the last one is, this represents the vehicles that would be seen parked overnight if any vehicle happens to be parked overnight. So you can see it's not as though it's a 20-foot box truck or an over-the-road vehicle. It's a very small utility technician's service vehicle. And again, no more than 15, which is written into the lease, they cannot park more than 15 overnight. That's it.
All right.
Happy to answer. Any questions?
Okay. Staff, you have comments?
Yeah, so I'm going to talk a little bit about the tax amendment that we approved in 2022, to give a little background information for both of this case and the case after this one. So in 2022, we brought a tax amendment to this commission, and then it was approved by the village board. The tax amendment is really for the OR district to facilitate and improve occupancy for these atypical buildings that are in the Office Research District. Before we were able to offer this special use route, these type of uses would have not been permitted at all within our code, but this allows, it allows an avenue for a lot of these atypical warehousing conjunctions, uses to have a route to get approval through the village board. Specifically, the tax amendment gave, as I said, the atypical buildings the ability to have these uses. The special use permit specifically is for accessory uses, and those accessory uses are limited to fabricating, processing, assembling, warehousing, and distribution of materials, goods, or products. So in this case, as ADT, as Jerry mentioned, they have an area, large area for an office, and then they have this accessory use for warehousing and storage, and then distribution of these materials for their technicians. So this has some other guidelines other than those special use requirements that we have seen before with other special uses. There are actually 10 other requirements that they have to abide by. It's in Section 8.13G. It's also in your staff report, as well as those special use conditions that they have to abide by. Those requirements address things like operation limitations, parking limitations, and proper accommodation of those fleet vehicles. Now getting more into ADT specifically and their request, the site itself is a office complex that was constructed about in 1995. It's a single lot that shares a parking lot with other tenants within the building. And a handful of the suites, as you can see in the staff report, actually had docks on the back for pickup and drop-off back when they were used for research uses. ADT specifically is requesting the special use permit to operate a business office and accessory limited warehousing and material distribution. As I said, the office use is a permitted use outright in this district, but this accessory use needs to come through for a special use permit before they can continue operations in it. So based on their floor plan that they showed, the property utilizes approximately 15% of the space for material distribution and warehousing in the rear. That's in compliance with what we require for the maximum, which is 25%. The petitioner, as he's shown, also indicated 15 parking spaces will be used for fleet vehicles. As he said, that is the maximum they're allowing on the property. It can be less than that, it doesn't have to be 15 every time. If they wanted to add more in the future, they would have to come back in if it's 20% or more of what, whatever that 15% 15 number of vehicles is, they'd have to come back in and ask for an amendment to their special use or a new special use altogether. As Jerry noted, the space is an operations center for their smaller commercial and residential off-site jobs. The existing warehouse space will be utilized for their technicians for storage, pickup of materials. Those materials, as they noted, are small cameras, security hardware, and cables, and they're expecting to use the facility from 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM on weekdays. Staff believes they sufficiently comply with those requirements set forth in Section 8.13, those 10 requirements. I'm open to any questions from the commission.
All right. Thank you.
Yep.
Is there anyone from the public who would care to address this issue? Seeing no one, let's go to the commissioners. Commissioner Berry, would you start?
Sure. Thank you, Doug. I think it's pretty straightforward. I think it's a great addition to the village and would love to have you guys. So like I say, I think with the tax amendments, it's pretty straightforward, so I like it.
Mr. Scales.
I concur. Thanks for the presentation. I did have one quick question. So is the purple area where, I see a recess dock, is that currently where they would pick up...
That's the yellow area is the recess dock?
Yeah. Oh, it's the yellow area?
Yes.
Okay. So the technician...
Which is a shared dock. It's not dedicated to ADT space that's shared for the other side of the property?
Okay.
That's where deliveries to stock, the supply room...
That's where it comes in.
Come in through that door.
Through that door.
And then technicians would pick up the parts that they need for their jobs to fill their, load their vans before they leave for the day, would come through that yellow area. It's not like they would pull up from the front door and load up.
Of course. Yeah. Okay. All right, I have no other questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, Jerry, thank you for the presentation. I'm supportive of your application, and the only question that I had was hours of operation.
General business hours are 8:00 to 5:00 PM, 8:00 AM to 5:00 PM. It's not a 16-hour, 24-hour job.
ADT does get calls all time.
That's where the technicians come into play, and they have their parts on their vans.
Thank you. No further questions, Jerry.
Thank you.
What I've heard from ADT is they do not expect all 15 spaces to be filled every night that are reserved. They have, they can be, but unlikely to ever be 100% occupied.
Mr. Peterson.
Are those parking spaces, where it showed those parking spaces, are those going to be labeled specifically for ADT to make sure nobody else parks there, or...
Good question. I don't have that answer. I believe that if we need to, and Tim, you're here representing the landlord, that we could put a sign if necessary.
Yeah, those spots are already marked with ADT parking, so in those 15 slots, there's signage already assisting.
Okay. For the record, there is signage for, to answer your question.
Okay. Is ADT in Westmont now, or no?
They're in Oakbrook now.
Okay. Are they keeping that facility, or are they...
No, that lease expires from March of 2024, and we're trying to get them out, moved in before their current lease expires.
Okay. I have no other questions. I think it's great to get new businesses in town and get new people in town, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Commissioner Thomas.
It's good. I have nothing, when you get your supplies in, not for the techs, but when the facility gets there, that's in a semi, and the docks are built to accommodate those.
Boxed up, received, yes.
But that's all, just, everything else is by the technician's vans.
Correct. That is correct.
I have no problem with this. You're custom-made for us.
Thank you.
Commissioner Van Buren.
Yeah, thank you for a complete presentation, and I don't have any problem with it, and welcome to Westmont.
Okay, for my part, I assume it's no conflict. I've been an ADT customer for more than 30 years.
Full disclosure.
And this is not a call center, their call center, I think, is in Texas.
That is correct.
But it's a 24-hour day, seven-day-a-week.
I don't know if their call center's in Texas, but I will say, this location is not a call center.
Thank you. So, yeah, I'm supportive as well. This is a, seems to be a no-brainer, so...
Can I ask a question? Two?
You may.
Thanks.
Do we have anything from the village attorney?
Thank you. Scott, quick question. I didn't see any analysis of off-street parking, so I'm assuming that the parking of up to 15 vans will not impact...
Yeah, we believe they're over the amount they're needed.
Okay. And then for the petitioner, there are some nice colored exhibits, including the one that's up on the screen right now, showing where the parking is. It was a little less clear on the materials that were distributed to us in our packets. Can either Scott or the petitioner send me the colored exhibits that you showed tonight that I can attach to the ordinance?
I have a copy of it, so I can add it. Yeah, the copier didn't like the highlighted portion.
And I guess my only other comment is the ordinance will contain a condition that the parking of fleet vehicles is limited to no more than 15 vehicles in the designated area, cargo vans. I think that's the only condition that's probably needed. You're free to make a motion to that effect, but I've got copious notices in the staff report, it will be part of the ordinance.
All right. Thank you. Any further discussion? The chair would entertain a motion to approve PCC 0212023, special use permit request to operate business offices with accessory material distribution and warehousing in the Office Research District.
So move, Scales.
Second, Berry.
Motion, Scales. Second, Berry. Discussion on the issue? Questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Commissioner Scales.
Yes.
Commissioner Berry.
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson.
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas.
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. There you have it, sir. You can pass the word that we're all supportive. Of course, we're a recommending body. Staff will inform you when you'll appear before the village board for the report.
We anticipate the August 24th meeting at 6:00 PM.
Okay.
I'll send you a follow-up.
Okay. Thank you. Chairman, thank you for your time. Commissioners, thank you for your time.
Good evening. Next item, PCC 0232023, request by Midwest Mechanical Group Limited Liability Corporation as the petitioner, and 1133 Cleveland Properties Limited Liability Oakmont Tech Center, the owner, regarding the property at 600 and 650 Oakmont Lane in Westmont for the following: Special use permit request to operate business offices with accessory warehousing and distribution in the Office Research District. Good evening.
My name is Bob Hayes. I work for Midwest Mechanical. We're an HVAC service company headquartered in Lombard. We also have a facility in Schiller Park, and we've outgrown the real estate that we currently occupy, and we're looking to lease 15,000 square feet in the 600 Oakmont property. Of that 15,000 square feet, we would like to designate 1,250 square feet for storage. We have a warehouse on our drawings, and in that space, we will be storing HVAC maintenance items, filters, small motors, ladders. No large equipment will be staged or stored in Westmont. We utilize our other properties for big orders. It's primarily going to function as an office space. Our technicians do not regularly come to the office. They take their vans home every night, they go from their dispatch home to job sites. The occasion when they have to come by to pick up a specific tool and drop off a tool will be the times that they're in Westmont, and again, that's sporadic, and we know overnight vehicle storage. That's the basis of our application.
Thank you. Staff?
Yeah, so this is a very similar situation as the last case, so I'm going to hit on some, I'm going to highlight some points. First, the petitioner, Midwest Mechanical Group, is requesting a special use permit for 600 Oakmont Lane, Unit 650. It is also known as 650 Oakmont Lane, under some of their mailing addresses. And it's to operate a business office and warehousing and material distribution. So based on their floor plan, the property utilizes approximately 8% of the space for warehousing, and that's attached in the staff report. And again, although the proposed office use is permitted in the OR district, this proposed accessory warehousing and material distribution is considered a special use, and they must obtain those special use permits prior to operating. And again, in addition to those special use standards listed in 13.09 that we've talked about before, the petitioner also has to comply with those 10 special use requirements that are noted in Section 8.13G, and that's also in your staff report. As the petitioner explained, this space will primarily operate as an administrative office branch for their larger facility. They also have a subsidiary within the office space known as Delta Building Technologies, and they will be using the office space specifically. The activities they perceive include customer services, administration, and technician dispatch. The site will not have any service vans for, or the site will have service vans for pickup and drop-off equipment at this location. The petitioner also indicated that the warehousing space will be utilized for storage of small tools, such as filters and belts, but it's not limited to that. Operations will typically be from Monday through Friday, 7:00 AM to 5:00 PM, normal business operating hours. And then, as they noted, there are no fleet vehicles overnight within their requests. If they ever in the future wanted to add that overnight parking, they would have to come back in and get an amended approval.
I was going to actually suggest, I just wrote a note, that since we do allow fleet vehicles to be parked on-site, that the ordinance allow for administrative approval of that, up to 15 vehicles in a designated parking area, so that they don't have to go through the time and expense of coming back for something that our ordinance expressly allows in a limited fashion.
Something along the lines that complies with that Section 8.13.
Yeah.
And that's all I have. I'm open to questions.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone from the public who would like to address the issue? Seeing no one. Yes, sir. Please come to the podium.
Have they signed it?
Yes.
Have they signed it?
There he is.
My name is Guy Bonneville. I manage the property on behalf of our family-owned business. Scott pointed out that our property amongst several properties in the area are atypical, and it's very true. And ours is probably more atypical than most of the properties in the area. Not certain exactly when the OR districting and zoning came into play, but the property was originally developed by Duke Realty in 1989, and it was built, the property was built for Rockwell, and specifically the Goss Graphics Division. And our property is 111,000 square feet, of which there is an upper level and a lower level. And the lower level is comprised of about 36,000 square feet, which is a warehouse, which is kind of interesting, so that's the atypical nature of our building within this environment. And as such, as a light manufacturing that Rockwell did, they had processing of printing presses and storage of printing materials in the lower level. In order to support that operation, we've got an interior semi-raised dock on one side of the building, we've got drive-in bays into the building, and we have a dual drive-in dock that's going to serve as Midwest Mechanical. So the facilities are there to support the operation that they're looking for. So I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Commissioner Berry, why don't you start again?
Sure, thank you. Just a couple things. Again, I like it, I think it's a good fit. So I guess I'm assuming, but are you guys the same Midwest that used to be in Willowbrook by Midwest Helicopters and so forth? And I know your longstanding business, and I've seen you guys for years, as a matter of fact, and full disclosure, in high school, which was a long time ago, 30-some years, I used to do the blueprints for your mechanical and so forth at a place at 63rd and Fairview here in town, Walruth Blueprint, and so I know you're longstanding, and I didn't even realize you guys had moved to Lombard. But, you know, definitely, I like the idea, I like the idea of these vehicles in town buying gas and, you know, using our restaurants and everything, so just like the previous one, I think this is a great addition and really a welcome to have you guys here in town. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Matt?
Yeah, I concur. I feel like we're going two-for-two with two home runs tonight with you guys, so thank you for coming to Westmont, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Commissioner Lavoy.
Yes, I only have one question for you, and that is, it's really not to do with your normal operations during the day, but the truck traffic as it relates to the neighboring property, do we have, maybe it's a question for staff too, do we have the ability to control where the trucks would come in to avoid the development, it's Maze Lake or...
Tarn Lakes?
Tarn Lakes, yeah.
Is that what you're speaking of? We were contacted by Tarn Lakes, their HOA, and they didn't express any opposition to this request. They were, I did offer to have them come in and speak, but they're not here currently. I don't, I don't know if we have the ability to...
Like internal circulation thing?
I don't know if we have the ability, because it's not site plan approval to do that.
Yeah, I get it.
We're kind of bound by what's in that one section of 8.13.
Got it. I have no other questions, I'm supportive of the petition.
Thank you. Commissioner Peterson.
I just am glad, like I said, for ADT, that a new business is coming into town and new people, and like Harold said, you know, people hopefully will enjoy some of what Westmont has to offer. Westmont has to offer. Thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome. It fits like a glove, so.
Thank you very much.
Paulak?
You said that you had outgrown the space in Lombard. Is this in addition to or instead of?
It is in addition to. I figured that was unclear the way I presented.
Okay. Well, I think it's a good fit, too, and welcome to Westmont. I'm glad you're here.
Thank you.
Was, you said you had contact, did you contact the homeowners association at Tarn Lakes? Did they contact, was it posted, was this information posted there?
Yeah, so we require mailings for the surrounding properties within 250 feet, and we sent them mailings to their HOA to inform them. We were contacted by one of the HOA representatives, I believe it was the secretary.
And they said they had no issue with it?
They, I express they can come here and voice their opinion.
Okay.
And they didn't see an issue.
And same with Mays Lake?
Mays Lake, we had no contact with. They did get a mailing, I believe, though.
Yeah, well, it seems another slam dunk.
I did have a question. I forgot. Could I go?
You forgot?
Yeah. How long is the lease that you guys are signing here?
Seven years.
Seven years. Thank you. That was my-
All right. Okay. Then the chair would entertain a motion to approve PCC item 0232023. Do I have a- So move. Thomas?
Second. Scales?
Thomas and Scales.
On the question, may I pose a question?
Certainly.
Is the warehousing that's going on, the limited warehousing in a first-floor basement warehouse area that's separate from the office space that's being leased?
Separated by wall divisions, but it's-
It's on the same floor?
Yeah.
So this site plan, it's hard for me to read it because it was small, and I couldn't read the small print, but the storage is within areas on this plan?
Yes, sir.
Or floor plan, not site plan. Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. There, Mr. Hayes, you got it. You can pass the word to folks you're representing. The staff will contact you.
Very well. Thank you all very much.
For the board. Thank you very much.
We expect it to be on the village board agenda for August 24th at 6:00 p.m., same room.
Okay. Good night, gentlemen. Next item, PCC 0242023, request by Balsami Incorporated and SCP from Westmont LLC, the owner regarding the property at 52 East Ogden in Westmont for a special use permit request for an amusement establishment in the B2 general business district. And it's my understanding that the petitioner has requested that this be continued.
Correct. The request was published for anticipation of this meeting. However, they have insufficient application material to move forward until the following meeting, so they're requesting that this case be open to continue to the following PCC.
Okay. And to our village attorney, how do we handle this to just vote to continue, and that's all we have to do?
First, open the public hearing like you do with any other public hearing, so it's officially open, and then ask for a motion to postpone this public hearing item to the September 13th PCC meeting. He read the item, but I don't think he said, "I'm opening the public hearing." So I think we should have those words on the record.
Okay. Is it, it's on October 13th, though, is it?
September.
Or September. It is the 13th.
September 13th.
I was thinking it was the 8th.
One week after. 13th.
Okay. Okay, so I need a motion to approve.
First, you had to open it.
Okay, so we'll open the-
Public hearing.
Open the public hearing.
Open the public hearing on PCC 0242023, this special request to operate the business offices with accessory warehouse for an amusement establishment in the B2 business district forward to the September 13th meeting.
Motion to approve to move that to the September 13th, 2023 public hearing. Second. Scales.
Okay. Motion, Berry, second. Scales.
And just for the record, there will be no new newspaper publication or notice to surrounding property owners because that was already done. We've opened the public hearing, and if your vote is yes to postpone it to September, then it will just publish the agenda for this item.
Do we know what the petitioner is? I mean, it's very vague now. It just says amusement.
You'll get, I think, details in your packet when it comes. I think if you want to explain it, I don't have any details myself.
The amusement establishment is their DBA Skyzone at the Trampoline Park. That's as much as we know.
We'll be jumping into September to hear all about it.
I have a question for our wonderful village attorney, and that is, I think this particular applicant, this petition already came before us for a continuance from the last meeting, correct?
Not from the last meeting.
I guess my question for John is that we continue these things if they're not ready next month. Is there a time limit on these continuance?
Not by state statute and not by local ordinance. So I think it's a rule of reasonableness where if it drags on and on, people are going to stop paying attention if they're interested in this, and we may force the applicant to pay the cost for rep publication and resending notices.
I'm just thinking of staff's time that they put in to go through this exercise and all of my fellow commissioners here to look at this petition. Is it going to be a continuation or is there a limit on it? That's all. Please, thank you for your answer.
And my question is, I thought we were specifically limiting it to next month's meeting.
Right now, it's postponed until next month's meeting. At that meeting, if they're not ready, you have the option to postpone it again, or you can just say, "We're tired of these postponements, and we're going to pull it off the agenda and not continue it," and force their hand to get their ducks in a row before we republish.
They get anything in yet?
Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Peterson?
Yes.
Commissioner Van Buren votes yes. Commissioner Lavoie?
Yes.
Commissioner Thomas?
Yes.
Commissioner Scales?
Yes.
Commissioner Berry?
Yes.
And Chairman Carmichael.
Yes. Next item, miscellaneous general updates. As we had discussed, the Illinois meeting of the APA, the American Planning Association, the Plan Commissioner Training, September 11th through the 13th at North Central College in Naperville. We assume that on the third day-
Yeah.
Would be the Commissioner Training.
We had a little bit more confirmation from them. We know that it's scheduled for September 13th, which is also the night of the PCC hearing. It is likely to be in the morning on that day at North Central College. If you plan on attending or if you are interested in attending, me or Jamie Hoffman know, and we'll try to get you on a schedule, get you registered and everything.
Okay.
Are you going to send us the information first?
I believe, I believe we're going to be sending out some type of email. They'll give you some more guidance once we know the actual times as well.
Sure. Okay.
Actually, Joe, if you're interested, we can coordinate something and we can-
So is it definitely on that Wednesday?
It's definitely on the Wednesday, and it's set in the morning of that Wednesday, and then we have the meeting here that night.
Please keep me in the loop because I'm interested.
Good. A lot of communities, they'll have three and four people attend these meetings over here.
I'll plan to attend again.
Good. Good. It'd be nice to have-
I'll also say, once we make the schedule out, we'll send it out. If you're interested in other workshops or something like that, we can probably get you registered for those as well.
All right. Thank you. Next PCC meeting, as we said, is the second Wednesday of September. That's the 13th, same day as the Commissioner Training. Before I call for an adjournment, anybody like to speak up to anything? Chris?
I just wanted to say that our feelings are out for Joe and his recovery. I hear it's all good news, but just want to give a shout out to him to make sure he gets back, and our prayers are with him, and all of our thoughts, too. And I'm sure I speak for everyone.
Yep.
Amen.
You bet. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move. Berry?
Second. Scales?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? This meeting is adjourned.